Good evening. Thank you all for attending today's regular Board meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is December 12th, the time is 6:01. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance being read by Bradley Jennings, a 4th grader at James Butler School?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Bradley. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Commons, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Guerra, members of the Board. It gives me great pleasure to recognize and welcome our newest members to our elite leadership team, so please stand when I call your name. Starting off with, and I hear some little ones are real excited about these people, you hear them? They're excited. New Assistant Principal at Hernando Middle School, Ms. Angelica Gallego, please stand. Elba Chavez is our new Director of Human Resource and Staffing and Recruiting. Mr. Adam Starkey is our new Director of State and Federal Programs. Not new to the district, but new to her role, Ms. Jessica Macias is our new School Improvement And new Assistant Principals at Montwood High School, Mr. Orlando Hairston and Angelica We have great confidence in the potential of all of these leaders, so congratulations to all of them. Also, friendly reminder that the district will be closed for the winter break, December 18th through January 2nd. Students will return to school on January 3rd, and I'm sure that I speak for all of you when I say that this is my favorite time of year. I would like to wish everyone, the Board of Trustees, all of our 6,000-plus amazing employees, our awesome students, parents, our entire community, a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. We have amazing students, teachers, you know, Board of Trustees, employee organizations, and the list goes on and on. Enjoy the holidays with your families and friends and get some much, much deserved rest. Thank you, President Guerra.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Next item, Board Honors, Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Guerra, members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Our first recognition will honor Team SISD students who won the 2017 Winter Holiday Art Contest. Students won top honors for their holiday-inspired pieces, which also incorporated SISD's "Endless Opportunities" tagline. Their artwork is featured in the At Socorro newsletter, which will be mailed to households across the district over the winter break, on the district website, and they are receiving a framed copy of their artwork and a pack of holiday postcards with their creations. Congratulations to these amazing students, and their artwork is depicted here on the screen. Our winners of this year's contest are from Escondrias Elementary, Andres Estrada; from Butler Elementary, Mary Jennings; her teacher is Joanna Erivis; from Montwood Middle School, Karen Centeno; her teacher is Corinne Solari; and from Socorro High School, Stephanie Asensio. If we can have you all, please come back to the front for a photo with Dr. Espinoza and our Board of Trustees. And just a quick note while they're gathering for that photo, that all of the portraits taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. There is a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner to our SmugMug account, where all of these pictures will be available for free, high-resolution download. Our next honor will recognize another group of talented students who showcased their artwork at the Chalk the Block event, which was held in downtown El Paso. Only 20 high school students out of hundreds of applicants from El Paso and Juarez are selected to participate in this event this year, or every year. This year, six SISD students participated in the annual contest. Congratulations to these amazing young artists. From East Lake High School, Kristin Thompson; and Jesus Perez. Their teacher is Claudia Castañeda. From Eldorado High School, not only celebrating this honor, but also her birthday, Celeste Lopez. Happy birthday. Her teacher is Candace Prince. Also from Eldorado, Arlette Copalo. And her teacher is Alison Vega. Next, we recognize SISD students who won honors in the 16th Annual El Paso Community College K-12 Art Exhibit: Salute to the Arts. The contest awarded only 34 participants out of 1,000, over 1,000 submissions that were entered in this year's contest. SISD students' artworks stood out and earned three first-place entries in several Art Student Society Awards. Congratulations to these amazing artists as well. They are from Desert Wind School, Alice Valdez; and Kevin Cadena. Their teacher is Karen Perez. From John Juggan School, Kate Hernandez; and teacher Ceci Ramirez. From East Lake High School, Alondra Gonzalez; and teacher Claudia Castañeda. From Eldorado High School, Alessa Sepulveda; Miriam Calzada; If we can have you all, please come back to the front for a photo. Keep smiling, keep smiling, look straight ahead. Next, we will recognize the Eldorado High School Varsity Volleyball Team for winning the 2017 1-6, or for a 6A-by-district championship. This is the second year that Eldorado wins this distinction after dominating all season and ending with a district record of 10-3 and an overall record of 25-14. In addition, the Lady Aztecs had several players make the All-District and Academic All-State Teams, shining a light on Team SISD. Congratulations to these amazing student athletes. Members of the audience, if you'll please hold your applause while we read the names of all the individuals on the team, so that all of their names can be heard. The championship Aztecs are Paige McGriff; Brianna Valdez; Annabelle Menchaca; Madison Hill; Jackie Paz; Team Manager Ivan Dominguez; Assistant Coach Elizabeth Huerta; and they are led by Head Coach Roel De Anda. If we can please have one loud round of applause for these amazing student athletes Our next honor will recognize the Montwood High School Varsity Football Team for winning the 2017 District 1-6A Championship and a 6A-by-district title. The Rams had a great season and ended with a record of 9-1. In addition, Montwood's offense was top-five in the state of Texas for scoring and total yards, and various team members were picked for the Greater El Paso All-Stars selection. Two athletes were named the 1-6A Offensive Athlete of the Year and a 1-6A Offensive Player of the Year, and earned various distinctions, such as State Leader in Receiving Yards, Leading Class 6A in Passing Yards, and having the second-highest career touchdowns in El Paso's history. Please a round of applause for these amazing accomplishments by the Montwood Rams. Again, members of the audience, if you'll please hold your applause while we read all of the names from the teams, so they can all be heard. The championship Rams are Andrew Fernandez; Alex Rodriguez; Duri Cepeda; Edward Garabai; Carlos Cisneros; Jason Fernandez; Efrain Young; David Niabla; Ricardo Olague; Chris Martinez; Abram Perez; Andrew Revilla; Neo Rodriguez; Josue Santana; Kevin Melendez; Dominic Espinoza; Everett Rule; Ethan Hegerdon; Jose Rivera; David Marentes; Austin Serano; Faisal Anda; Faisal Anda; Julian Velasco; Jonathan Lopez; Jaime Sierra; Richard Lara; Jesse Garcia; Oscar Luna; Alejandro Ayala; Isaiah Rivera; Ivan Romero; Moises Pereya; Andrew Perez; Dominic Rojas; Abel Duran; Esteban Castañeda; Romelo Williams; Eric Ramirez. Team Managers are Crystal Morales; Julian Smith; Crystal Perez; Lindsay Nunez. Their Coaches are Sergio Pedrosa; David Portillo; Danny Quijas; Sam Villarreal; Joe Ruiz; Michael Sherman; Pete Perez; David Telas; John Villarreal; Maybe 20 years ago. All right, if you all hold up your certificates, facing up, please. If you'll open it up over there, Coach. There you go. All right, there we go, there we go. All right, everybody just please look straight ahead, right on Mr. Largo, right here with the Canon camera, and just keep looking there. Keep smiling, keep smiling, keep smiling, keep going, keep going. Almost there, keep smiling, keep smiling. All right, congratulations once again. Okay, we have one special presentation this evening to honor two outstanding educators in Team SISD who recently won the 2017 University of Texas at El Paso Mentor Teacher of the Year Award and the 2017 Novice Teacher Swartz Award. The Swartz Award recognizes a new educator for their professionalism, innovation, and excellence in teaching. The Mentor Teacher Award recognizes veteran educators who offer professional support to mentor and inspire other educators. Congratulations to this year's Novice Teacher Swartz Award winner, from Manuel R. Puente's The Mentor Teacher of the Year Award winner is from Eldorado High School. Congratulations to Candace Prince. Oh, Candace, Candace, Ms. Prince, one more photo, one more photo.
Next item is open forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who are requested to speak to the Board during open forum in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda, and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the Board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is now posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations a serious consideration. Let's proceed to open forum.
Hello, good evening, Dr. Espinoza and honored Board and Team SISD. My name is Erica Carrasco, I'm a 4th grade teacher at Luhan Chavez. First of all, thank you for your time and allowing me to be here tonight. I am here in hopes for the consideration of my father, Sergeant Jose Efi Carrasco, for the naming of the newest addition, School 49. I believe that he is deserving of this amazing honor, because not only was he a great husband and father and grandfather, but an outstanding role model and was very committed to Socorro ISD for almost 30 years, until his passing in 2015. My dad had a dream for his children to receive an excellent education and become successful in life, so he moved his family here to Socorro ISD, in which he was hired as a security guard in 1985. My brother and I are proud products of Socorro ISD, we're both Bulldogs. We both graduated from Socorro, and his loyalty to us and the district was proof of his love for his job and Team SISD. This is what has inspired my two brothers and myself to follow in his footsteps as public servants. My brother is a Socorro ISD PD police officer. He's on a patrol, very proud of him. And again, I'm a teacher at Luhan Chavez, I've been with the district 10 years. Started off in a substitute at Riscade. Started off in a substitute at Riskade, and now thankfully a teacher. My older brother is also a police officer, actually a state police officer for New Mexico, and he also served Socorro ISD as a security guard earlier in the nineties. My father gained recognition with the people of the Socorro community due to his hard work and his number one priority, student safety. He loved his job, and he did it well, and his hard work paid off as he later moved up to attendance officer, also known as a truant officer back in those days. He became a role model in the Socorro community as he volunteered on Saturdays with the graffiti wipeout, which took place on Saturdays, and he volunteered. And he got to know students and encouraged the students, and he encouraged them to stay in school and stay away from drugs and gangs, and he gained a real connection with them. And he learned to value, he valued them, and I think he made them feel respected, you know, by an adult. I remember being with my dad countless of times and having people come up to him and thank my dad for believing him, believing in them, and helping them stay out of trouble. I can't say what an amazing role model my dad was to SISD. In the nineties, SISD embraced the concept of having a police department in which they had a fundamental role in his development. The police department was later established in 2001, which he was very proud of. I'm extremely proud to say that my father was the district's first officially sworn Texas Peace Officer, in which he carried badge 001. We have it shelved up in our living room, so. He excelled as an officer and took his new position very seriously, but was still humble as the first day as a security guard. He would not miss a day of work in fear of something happening at one of his schools, and him not being there to ensure their student's safety. He was a dependable and honest man, and with these qualities, he was then promoted to a position of sergeant, and I'm honored to say he was the very first and the only sergeant for many years here in Socorro. My father's commitment to the SISD family and passion for his job motivated him until the day of his passing, like I said, in October 2015. He served SISD for nearly thirty years. Over three hundred and fifty people attended his funeral services, and was honored by America's High School, John Trugan, and his first home, Socorro High School. A parade of officers from all over the city, including Border Patrol and New Mexico State Police, attended and escorted him to his final resting place. It was overwhelming, it was overwhelming to see all the love, the support, and the impacts my father had made to the SISD family. It was proven that that day of his influence and his impression made to so many from different generations, from little ones to elementary to high school to even older. My family and I created a petition on November twenty-seventh this year, and within a few days, we exceeded our goal, and we reached a thousand seventy-two signatures online. We had, and it was actually a matter of days that we got those signatures. We have had many of the police officers, teachers, staff, sign them, but more importantly, the people of Socorro family. I believe that the support and the love of the Socorro community gives proof that my dad embodied what a good police officer was. He was trustworthy, he was humble, dependable, and truly an officer that served and protected his community. Thank you.
That was really heartwarming. Your father is really missed in this district. He was a really good man. I can't remember when I didn't see him growing up and going to school.
Next speaker is Jesse Morales.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and your service obviously you provide to our community. Well, I'm the fiance of the beautiful lady I just spoke and the father of the beautiful little girl you just saw up here. We felt it insightful to provide the board with some of the voices in that petition. Some of the things we saw there were Sergeant Carrasco was not only an awesome person, but a great mentor. Having known him almost my entire life, he was treated people fairly and with great respect. I was honored to have worked with him for several years when he talked me into applying for SISPD. There's no greater person that deserves to be honored with the naming of a new school after them. Joe, you are truly missed, and thank you again for all the wise words and guidance you gave me. This is Lorenzo Leiva. Robert Weist from Dallas, Texas. It is at least, it is the least the community can do for a man that influenced so many generations in our community. He always had time for you and was always willing to help, a great man. I'll just read three more. Janelle Gonzalez, "From the bottom of my heart, Joe is a wonderful, kind-hearted man. It was a privilege to get to know him personally and to work with him. He kept SISD students safe, and his cheerfulness was spread throughout the campus. His service will be missed at SISD, and a friend will be missed at Healy." Tracy Drager, Albuquerque, New Mexico. "In 2001, this country remembered how amazing law enforcement is, how they risk their lives every day to make us safe. We have forgotten to teach that lesson because it is no longer proper to have an officer as a hero. Elementary school is the perfect place to begin reteaching that lesson, that there are heroes in the world and they are worth remembering, especially an officer who dedicated so much of his time to the school's anti-gang work and combating kidscaping school." And finally, Monica Tapia. "This would be an amazing way to acknowledge his exceptional dedication to SISD and the community. His sincere care and commitment for student will never be forgotten." This speaks volumes as to the man, friend, colleague Sergeant Jose F. Carrasco was, and why we seek him being honored by having the forty-ninth school named after him. In closing, I hope this choir clearly echoes the wishes of many others unpresent here and unaware of which, of what we are trying to accomplish here today, which is having Jose F. Carrasco's name engraved on our next SISD team's milestone, which is Campus Forty-Nine.
Mr. Nahara?
Dr. Espinoza, can we make sure that the... That the naming committee has the information that we've been provided as they, you know, make the very difficult decision of arriving at a final recommendation for us to consider?
Yes, sir, we will do that, and I believe, Mr. Escobar, it is February or March? Probably we're looking at February, so we'll make sure that they nominate his name to the committee, so we're looking around February.
Next speaker would like to speak on Item Ten-E. Mr. Mendoza, you want to speak now or on Item Ten-E? Whatever you prefer, sir. Mr. Alonso Mendoza, next speaker.
Okay. Good evening, Superintendent Espinoza, President Guerra, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Alonso Mendoza, and I'm an organizer with Socorro Education Association. As you might already know, the President of the United States has rescinded deferred action for childhood arrivals, also known as DACA, a program that gives undocumented people protection from deportation. Now it's up to Congress to pass a legislative fix for this problem. The Socorro Education Association, Texas State Teachers Association, and National Education Association are currently having a campaign to support the Clean Dream Act. The Clean Dream Act will protect Dreamers, also known as DACA recipients, without a lot of political add-ons. These political add-ons include increases in border security and immigration enforcement. The Dream Act would give DACA recipients a pathway to citizenship, and is the proposed legislation that has the most bicameral and bipartisan support. It's estimated that over twenty thousand Dreamers are currently serving the students of the United States as teachers, and that twenty, two thousand of those are working here as our colleagues, teacher colleagues in Texas. Nationwide, we are targeting specific members of Congress who have yet to support the Dream Act, and our target in the El Paso area is Representative Will Hurd. Despite calls from the El Paso community and constituents throughout his district to co-sponsor a Clean Dream Act, he has yet to respond to us as to whether or not he will support the Dream Act and this legislative fix for the rescission of DACA. As Socorro ISD has many campuses within Congressman Will Hurd's district, SISD serves many of his constituents. Given this, we are asking that SISD write, that the SISD School Board write and send a letter to Representative Will Hurd to urge him to co-sponsor a Clean Dream Act by December. The rescission of DACA and the uncertainty that DACA recipients are currently facing is a crisis that directly or indirectly affects all members of SISD. DACA recipients are students, teachers, family members, educators, and so it is SISD's moral obligation to protect the immigrant community and to push for legislation that will make our schools safer and that will not threaten to separate our families. Every day that passes by without a Clean Dream Act, one hundred and twenty-two DACA recipients are losing their DACA and losing their protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, seven, Board of Trustees Business. Reported announcement of Board Member Continued Education Credit Hours. As required by Texas Administrative Code Chapter sixty-one point one, the Board President would announce the completed, deficient, and exceeded board training continued education hours for each trustee. So I will read the following credits from each trustee. Paul Guerra met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tier Three. Cynthia A. Nahara met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tier Three. Michael A. Nahara met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tier Three. Hector F. Gonzalez met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tier Three. Antonio Tony Ayu met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tier Three. Angelica Rodriguez met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tier Three. Gary Gondra met requirements in Tiers One and Two and exceeded requirements in Tiers Three. I'm happy to say that each board member completed and exceeded the credit hours. Great job. Next item, District Reports. Mr. Tom Ayton.
Good evening, President Guerra, Doc Espinoza, members of the board. The Facility Committee met on December the fourth to review various projects and items that are concerning the construction of facility and child nutrition and maintenance and operation. And beginning on page eleven of your booklet, we'll have the report that has to do with Elementary School Number Twenty-Nine. This project, of course, everybody's aware that we had the groundbreaking ceremony. It's been a month now since then, and we are moving very quickly on preparing the slabs, continuing the work on the electrical and plumbing underground. We are actually starting to cast some panels. We've got a lot of panels cast, and I believe you can see by some aerials that we have some casting beds, and you can see the panels around the periphery or the perimeter of the slabs that have been cast, and they should be beginning to be erected possibly beginning of next week. Here's another aerial of the school. As you see, we are continuing the work, we're doing the, as I stated, the underground work and continuing to cast and prepare to do more casting beds in order for us to pour more panels. That concludes my construction report. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Ayton. Next item, nine, Consent Agenda. Are there any items or any board member would like to have, please? I have a motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Mr. Gondra. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, number ten, New Business. Mr. Tony Resa, Consider Appeal of Order of Authorizing Assurance of Socorro Independent School District Unlimited Tax Building and Refunding Bonds for Series 2018. Mr. Resa?
Yes, sir. Dr. Guerra, President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Tonight, we are requesting your approval to issue two hundred and eight point nine million dollars in unlimited tax building and refunding bond Series 2018. With us tonight are Mr. Jeff Robert with First Southwest Hilltop Securities, the district's financial advisor, Mr. Paul Brayden from Norton Rose Fulbright, the district's bond counsel. They're here to present this information to you and ask for your approval. Gentlemen?
Mr. Resa, or President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, members of board, Jeff Robert with First Southwest, congratulations on last month's election. I know a lot of time and effort went into that, and this is the first parameter for the issuance of authorization from that election. And as Mr. Resa mentioned, we have a small refunding that's what we call a current refunding, meaning that the call date, which is February fifteenth of 2018, we're going to be within ninety days of that. So unlike the prior refundings we've done, which are advanced refundings, this is kind of one, you hate to use the term no-brainer, but when you're that close to the call date, the only reason why you wouldn't refund it is if you just felt like rates are going to go down sharply in the future, and they're at pretty low levels right now. So I'm going to go through, I think, the booklet that you have in front of you, as well as the electronic copy, very quickly, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. On the first slide, I think you've probably seen this before, this is a graph of the twenty-year bond buyer index. It's not meant to give you an apples-to-apples comparison of where your rate's going to be, because it is the twenty-year bond rate, but it does just give you an idea of where the market's been on a weekly basis, all the way back to the early eighties, if you look at the large graph in the background in white, and then up in the top corner on the right just shows you what it's done the past year. And this was, I had sent to Mr. Resa last week, believe it or not, from November thirtieth, it comes out weekly every Thursday, to December seventh, it went from three fifty-nine to three twenty-nine. So we've seen a major, major rally in tax-exempt rates. In terms of timing for this issuance, the earliest we could do it is after the first of the year, because we won't get the permanent school fund guarantee until December twentieth, which is pretty much when the financial markets are a little shut down. So hopefully rates will still be at similar levels that they are right now. The next page, this is right now the planned issuance that we're looking at, in columns two, three, and four, this first new money issue would be two hundred million, and these can certainly change depending on how construction cash flows look, but the next issuance would be projected for Series 2019 of a hundred and fifty million, and then the final in 2020, which would be ninety-eight and a half million. And like I said, those could, can certainly change. As planned, we are going to use some INS fund balance to manage the INS tax rate, but we feel like we won't exceed that thirty-nine-nine figure that was communicated to the voters. And then I just graphed it there at the bottom. On the refunding itself, it's the Series 2008 issue that we're looking at, it's eight million nine seventy, it only goes out through 2026. You can see the interest rates there range from four-ten to four-seventy-five, and once again, that call date is two fifteen of eighteen. The next slide shows the projected savings structure that we would have over in column eight. We're trying to save money in years nineteen and twenty-one, because that helps our overall model, tax rate model. If you go up to the top there, the second number there in the light blue, if you'll recall, in our industry, whenever you're at four percent PV savings or better, that's considered, you know, worth looking at. In this case, it's at ten forty-five. So anytime you're in double digits, that's a pretty significant amount of savings. The next slide, I think all of you are aware of how the parameter refunding works and the parameter new money issue as well, but it's allowed under Texas Education Code. You delegate final pricing authority to Dr. Espinoza or Mr. Resa. You establish parameters that are in the document. You establish parameters that are in the document that Mr. Brayden has provided, and that can only approve the issuance if those parameters are met. That allows, on the next page, it just allows us to hopefully time the market in the best interest of the district. Like I said, after the 1st of the year, we'll probably take a look at it that very first Thursday. If the markets are up and going again pretty well, we might price then. If not, it'd probably be that following week, depending on where rates are. And then lastly, the last page shows the proposed parameters that are in the order that Mr. Brayden put together. Once again, Superintendent CFO or the delegated pricing officers. The 208,970 is a combination of 200 million dollars of new money, 8,970 of refunding, maximum true interest cost 475, minimum savings threshold on the refunding 6%. The final maturity date, we're looking at 25-year bond issuance on the new money side, and then the expiration is 180 days. I know I went through that pretty quickly. If anybody has any questions?
Do you have any questions?
No question, Mr. Gara.
Question, I have.
So the projected savings is the, on page five, the 1,055, 741?
Yes, at the very bottom there, in the red. Yes, sir. That's the total debt service savings on that.
Okay. And then this doesn't extend the term, right? All it does is reduces the interest rate?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then two slides prior to that, slide number three.
Yes, sir.
There's an asterisk right next to the center there, right under the number five at the top, on projected INS surplus contribution. What's it for?
You know what? What I did was I had the amount that you had available as of the last audit year, and it got cut off. Tony, what was the number that you have in INS? It's like 9 million?
Fun balance?
An INS fund balance.
About 15.
15, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so it was just to show, I'm sorry, I had that cut off. It was to show that you had more than enough INS fund balance to cover what we were using.
Oh, okay.
Is what that is. My mistake.
Okay, and again, let me see, this is on the Agenda for Action, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So all you're asking us to do is to approve the parameter, so if at the time that we decide to move forward, all the variables are in our favor, we can move forward, save the over $1 million. If not, then we just leave everything as is, and everything stays as is, but if it isn't our favor, we're going to save $1 million.
That's correct, and then this also includes the issuance of the new money piece as well.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Nahara, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 10B, consider approval proposal to widen Pelicano Drive.
Good evening again, President Gara, members of the Board. During our Facility Committee meeting, we had the county come and present to us on the proposal, or their proposal, along with the Comunal Regional Mobility Authority are proposing to widen Pelicano to a six-lane thoroughfare, three on each side, beginning from Joe Battle, three miles down to Darrington Road. And during the committee, Sal Alonso and Frank Correll made a presentation. They're here tonight. We have that same presentation, and I would like for them to spend a little minute, a little bit of time to go through that presentation. And then it has to do with, like I said, widening of Pelicano, addressing some issue. Everybody's aware that at the intersection of Sunfire and Druigan Pre-K-8 School, there's a little low dip, and every time it kind of rains, it floods, and we have a big detention pond there. So there is some proposal that could affect that pond, and this is what they're going to be kind of talking about. So at this time, I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, President, Superintendent Espinosa, and Board Members. Thank you for having us. My name is Sal Alonso. Work for El Paso County Public Works Department, oversee the transportation projects. With me today is Mr. Frank Correll, who is our project manager for the design of the project. We're here to present the widening of the Pelicano project. Limits have been described from Loop 375 all the way to Darrington. It's about a three-mile stretch. The construction estimate is about 18 million dollars. Part of this project is to widen the existing conditions. As you know, Pelicano right now goes from a two lanes, widens to four lanes, to six lanes, and then comes back to a two lane. So with all the development in the area, in the Mission Ridge area, we want to be able to provide the connectivity that that area needs. The county has invested several million dollars in other projects along East Lake, Mission Ridge Boulevard. Another project would be Darrington, and this would be the, I guess, the northern part of the project to complete the network, to get you from East Lake north to Pelicano. And future project will be taking you from Pelicano north to Montwood and Joe Battle and that area. But today, we'll be discussing the Pelicano widening project. Again, this is a federal project that is funded through federal dollars that we went after through the MPO, the Metropolitan Organization. Just to give you a quick project overview, again, it's the Pelicano Drive from Joe Battle to Darrington Road. Construction activities would include the widening of Pelicano Drive to six lanes divided. We will also be providing multimolar enhancements such as sidewalks, hike and bike trails, five-foot bike lanes within the roadway with a buffer in between on the roadway. Again, it's just a glimpse of the project limits overseeing the entire limits from the project. As you can see, it goes from Loop 375 to Darrington, again, about three-mile stretch. This is a proposed cross-section that we're proposing for the roadway. We would have 11-foot through lanes, 11-foot drive, turning lanes. We would also increase the paving area on the side. Right now, the existing cross-section varies from 60 to 20 and goes back and forth, but the ultimate, the full right-of-way is 120-foot right-of-way. We would also provide a six-foot pedestrian refuge at the intersections, and that would provide connectivity as any pedestrian, students crossing from one side of Pelicano to the other side will be able to have a refuge in the center. Would also have an eight-foot bike on both, one side of the roadway, and also a five-foot buff bike lane on both sides of the roadway. Thank you. Again, this is just a glimpse of what we are proposing. Our team prepared this exhibit. It just gives you a little concept of what the future Pelicano roadway with all the improvements would look like. Of course, it would include some landscaping in the medians. We do have a raised median. We're trying to use a median to capture some of the stormwater. As you know, in this area, if you're familiar with this area, when it rains, there's a big issue with the drainage, and this is one of our obstacles that we are facing in this area. So one of the solutions is possibly take some of the runoff and kind of do some water harvesting within the medians. Again, it's just the six lanes divided. You can see the buffer separation with the bike lanes. We provide safe crossings for students in the area, again, because of the school, right butting against the Sunfire and Pelicano, and plus all the new development along Mission Ridge, as students and kids would be walking towards school, either riding on the bike or walking to school. This just gives you a different angle, looking from Pelicano as you're heading, I guess, west on Pelicano by the Sunfire intersection. This is an overall glance of what is existing right now. As you know, the school that we're looking at right now is at the intersection of Sunfire and Pelicano. We do have an existing pond that is used for on-site ponding for the school, and I believe some runoff from Sunfire, but I'm not too sure, but I think most of the ponding that is used is for the school. These are just some sort of concepts of what we were looking at. As I mentioned earlier, our main goal is to widen the project, but with that comes, where do we take this runoff? And again, there is no outlet currently right now. As I mentioned earlier, when it rains, at the low point, just right before the school is the low point, and with a small rain to the big rainy event, there's always a ponding area that either our crews text out or other folks would have to go in there and kind of pump out the water because it has no outlet. So one of the options is looking at possibly asking the District to see if they would consider working with the county to see if we could maximize the existing pond in this area, either to do some sort of combination of some green space, play area, or a pond, or just an overall pond, your typical pond with rock walls, just to accommodate the runoff generated by Pelicano plus what's going in there from the school. Now, this pond is not going to be sufficient to address the entire three-mile stretch. This is an area that we're looking at possibly just draining from Loop 375 to about Mission Ridge at the most. The grades, as you know, goes, kind of depresses and it flattens out, but for us to be able to, able to take all the flow into this area is just not feasible. So this is one location that we're looking at possibly providing a pond, and then we would have to, as we're heading east on Pelicano, identify possibly up to two other ponds to accommodate the stormwater runoff. But again, this is just a little concept of what we could possibly work with, with the District, to take advantage of this, the existing pond in this area. Another option is just maximizing the pond a little bit deeper, and then knowing that the school sometimes has parking, I guess, the lack of parking in those areas, we would propose some sort of flat area with the excavation of the pond, we'd be able to provide some sort of flat top as if the District decides to, at a later time, take advantage and possibly pay for additional parking in this area. And that concludes our presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, any technical questions. I have our project manager. Again, this is just some recommendations that I'm here presenting to the District to see if you are interested in any possible solution or to accommodate the stormwater runoff. I do want to make note that we are not asking for any additional right-of-way for the right-of-way. We have the full 120-foot right-of-way. What we're looking for at this point is just to see if we could work with the District to solve our drainage issue that we have in this area. So at this point, I thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Yes, President, I do have a question. So, and I think you mentioned it, I just want to make sure, like, for example, on this picture that's on here, a lot of the flooding and the water gathers, if you see where the football field's at?
Yes.
In that area there. So I think I heard you say, well, somebody changed the picture. Well, I think I heard, could you put it back on that? There you go. I think I heard you say that this pond, what you have designed here, even though the flooding takes place up there by the football field in that area there, it would alleviate, even though the flooding is kind of, you know, whatever the distance that is?
Yes, and what we would do, and I'll let Frank Correll go into a little bit more detail on the design of it. I know we're early on the design, but the thought is we would put some, your curbs, inlets, infrastructure on the low spot, and then carry the flow underground in either through RCP or some sort of network, and then discharge it into the pond, so.
Mr. Gara?
Question, I have.
When would this construction start and projected to stop?
Okay, good question. We, this project is in the current 2040 MTP, which is the Master Therapist Plan, which means that this project is obligated to be completed by December 31st of 2020. So this roadway has to be open before December 31st, 2020. So that gives you a kind of range on how fast this project is moving. We started on the design as of maybe two months ago. We are looking to wrap up the design late next year, and our target is hopefully, hoping to let, at the earliest, late, about this time next year, to be honest with you, or the first part of 2019. The reason we're trying to expedite the design review is because construction for magnitude of this project, which is about three miles, we're looking about anywhere from 18 to 24 months. So we want to be able to have adequate time for the contractor to go in, construct Pelicano, and have that all wrapped up before December 31st of 2020.
So is the question that we're considering, basically, will the school district allow the county to make that hole bigger so that more of the runoff can run into it and alleviate, you know, all the water that sits in the road? Is that basically the question?
Yes.
Okay.
And of course, your support of the project, too, because we would have to, we will be having some public meetings as early as by early spring of next year. Because this is a federal-funded project, we have to have project input, so of course, we would also ask the support of the District for this project.
Okay. I'm just a little confused, I mean, because, you know, we see road widening around our schools all the time, and nobody's ever come to ask us, and now you're asking, so I'm wondering, what's the difference? Why now? You know, East Lake was widened, there's a school not too far from there, there's all that construction right by Dr. Sue Shook. Nobody ever asked us anything about that, so I'm just wondering, why now? You know, and so now it makes sense.
Sure.
Because if we move forward, you know, we need to make the hole deeper.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it's a requirement, though, but what I've seen in some of the other areas, so what does it come with? As we make the hole deeper, you know, that increases the danger, of course, to the students who are housed right next to it. Are we going to have the county's commitment that they put a higher rock wall around it so that it both beautifies and limits access?
Yes, that would be part of the, if we chose to, there do some, a combination of pond park or just your typical pond with your standard six-foot rock wall, it would be part of the construction to secure the pond. Because of the closeness of the school and students, we don't want kids to go in there, so we would provide a six-foot rock wall. We would provide, again, landscaping along Pelicano and all that, so that would be taken care of.
What about vector control?
I'm sorry?
Vector control, the mosquitoes, you know, the deeper the pond, the longer the water sits there, and we've got the students right there, you know, that's a lot of mosquitoes real close. You know, and our kids go outside all the time.
No, it's understandable, and of course, our ponds, you typically have to design for them to drain within about a two-days period, but being that they would be a pond that, if we would move forward with the pond, that the county would maintain and make sure that it is adequately draining or preventing any mosquitoes from collecting there. So our goal is for the pond, as soon as it rains, it does percolate like it's supposed to within a reasonable time, and then prevent from any mosquitoes from...
And I don't know if you're prepared with this answer, but this particular, you know, Pelicano, widening of Pelicano, so that's going to go from Joe Battle all the way to Darrington. You know, there's, we're Darrington, from Darrington to Paseo del Este, you know, that's a one-lane road with a 30 mile an hour speed limit. As soon as the construction at East Lake starts, you know, all the people are going to start cutting there. We've got, you know, students, buses, teachers, all trying to get to Dr. Sue Shook. We've got people cutting, you know, from the east, from that East Lake area, trying to get to John Druigan, trying to go to work. I mean, already, the traffic is bad. If you've ever been caught at that stop sign.
Yes.
You know exactly what I mean. Is, you know, where is, are you able to tell me where's, why? Is, you know, where is, are you able to tell me where's widening that road? Um, you know, otherwise to me, this sounds like increasing, you know, making the funnel bigger.
Right.
But the end is still this little.
No, that's, that's a good question and I do have an answer for that. That project is all but completed on the design and we should be going out for construction on that portion of Darrington on the limits you're concerned about from East, uh, from East Lake all the way to Pelicano. And that we, we're also widening to a six lane divided roadway with bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides.
Woo-hoo! Got your answer.
Okay, good. So...
And, and if I, if I could add, the, the reason we haven't, I guess, triggered that project is, um, just at this intersection that you see, we just finished completing, uh, I think as early as March of twenty, of this year was the Mission Ridge extension. And that goes from Pelicano just one mile south of that. There is a gap about a three quarter mile that is still missing. Those plans should be wrapped up at the end of this year, so we're hoping to go out to bid for construction for that last piece, uh, as early as January, February of twenty eighteen. That is about a six month project, cause it's, it's a short stretch. Once we complete that roadway project, we'll be able to open Mission Ridge from Pelicano all the way to East Lake.
Okay.
That will provide, provide an alternative going north and south. At that point, we feel comfortable by going and releasing the project on Darrington because if we start construction right now, you know, it's congested, there's no north and south. So with Mission Ridge open, open to a full six lanes, we could carry more, more traffic on, on Mission Ridge or we're under construction on Darrington. Now, the bad thing with all this is there's, I'll be honest with you, there's gonna be a lot of projects that are gonna be overlapping, uh, because we're gonna about to start East Lake Phase One, which is from I-ten all the way to Darrington. And that's almost a two-year project, uh, that's scheduled to start construction. We, I think we, we have, oh, uh, our bids opening, uh, January fourteenth, about a month after that, we'll get the contractor out there and off he goes. So we'll be under construction for East Lake for, and that's about a three mile stretch. Shortly after that, we'll release Darrington, which again, there'll be concurrent, two projects going concurrently. And then sooner after that, once Pelicano's ready, we're releasing that project. All these projects are on a short timeline, well, on a timeline to be completed by the December thirty first, twenty twenty network, so.
Two years.
Okay.
So there is, there is plans to wind Darrington as we speak. It's, we're just waiting, we're trying to time it, so as Mission Ridge gets, gets, uh, completed to open that up, complete for traffic, we could go ahead and, and focus on Darrington.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
I have a question.
I did, oh, go ahead, Mr.
It doesn't matter. Uh, sir, I have a question. One of the slides, uh, it shows additional school parking.
Yes.
And the slide before that, it showed green space. When does that decision need to be made?
I, I don't expect addition, I know if you need some additional time, I'm just presenting this to, to the board today to get your input on whether you support this or would you like to see something else? We're, we're open to any suggestions, so I, I, I don't, I'm not gonna hold you to if you wanna go with the parking or the open space or just a regular pond. I need, need some time to kinda look at this, digest it and come back.
It's not a decision that needs, has to be made today?
That is correct. I just wanted to present this early enough, uh, because we're, we're, this design's underway, uh, but before we get too far along, we just wanna know what, what, what are the parameters we're working with, whether it's a regular standard pond or versus a pond park type of, uh, infrastructure that we'd be looking at.
Thank you.
Mr. Guerra?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, you have two proposals, uh, the one with the green and the one with the parking lot.
Yes, sir.
The one with the parking lot makes the hole a little bit bigger than the other one. Why? I mean, uh, you, if, if we go with the smaller hole, would it in the near future have a problem with it?
No, and again, visually, it looks like the hole's a lot bigger, but this is just very concept, we, we haven't gone into the, the hard numbers to get to the exact area of the footing. This is just an ex, uh, kinda illustration on what it would look like if we would do the pond and additional parking. Uh, it, it's not really to scale, so I'm not saying that the pond's gonna be this big. If we just did a, do a standard po- uh, pond, we're looking at about, uh, three to one slopes, max depth of twenty, twenty feet in depth with a depth gauge ramp, six foot rock walls. If we do a combination of the pond park, we would have to gentle the slopes because it's gonna be used as a green space slash part, uh, uh, field, if you would say, and usually those, usually they wanna, we'd like to see at, at least a six to one slope, which means the pond gets a lot wider because of the capacity. If we, if we decide just to do a standard park, then we could just go to three to one slope and just do your, your, your standard part, uh, pond that you see typically around the areas.
The, the other item, I think that the additional parking to me would make more sense because if you create a park, you have the ability of the kids trying to go in that park and maybe jump the fence or whatever and if, if that is not in there, you know, the, the safety would be increased.
Right.
President Guerra? Yes, uh, Mr. Alonso?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Alonso, first of all, this is, seeing this, it's, it's very exciting, especially with our school district just last month passing a bond, cause in that area, between Paseo del Este and Pelicano, we were gonna, we look at having two schools, an elementary and a middle school, so with Mission Ridge opening up, three lanes, Pelicano, three lanes, Darrington, I think, I heard, right?
Yes, yes.
That's a, it, we're gonna need it, we're, we're, we're gonna, as Mr. Naga said, you know, you have people coming to work, going to work and, and that'd be a interesting route for them if their schools were there right now. So, but so, a- and I, I hope I don't go off the rails on this and if I do, Mr. Blanco or Mr. Alonso or put me back on. So are you, you're presented today to share this information with the trustees, that is the school district's land, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So are what you're asking is for the board to consider in the future, obviously they won't make a decision today, hey, we're the county, we need this land here for the pond to, to, you know, so it could relieve the, the water. Or is the district willing to consider to sell this, this, this part of the, where you would build a pond, uh, are we winning a trade, I don't know, I see some land back of Druigan, I don't know who that belongs to, the county?
Yes.
Hey, you give us this land, yeah, we'll give you that, I mean, I don't know what we would build back there, uh...
Yes.
Maybe some Little League baseball fields is, you know, anyway, anyway, um, I have a six year old that plays baseball, as you can see. So is that basically what, that the dis- that the board needs to decide, hey, would you be considering?
Yes, that is correct. Uh, we have, uh, like, several options is, uh, just do a land swap, like you mentioned, we could do, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, just by the land outright.
Oh, there's that, there is.
Or some sort of combination, so, yeah, we have options, I, I don't, you know...
Something as simple as an easement too, right? It just, there's...
We would be, it would be a drainage easement.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So then, there's no action required, right? It's just, or what, what?
Just to prove the proposal.
Just to prove the proposal.
Right. Yeah, i- it's just a presentation to the board and then for you guys to kinda, I just wanna open up the channels, uh, so, you know, next time I'm here presenting, then hopefully, uh, you have, uh, the board has decided on what option they would like to see or...
The agenda says approval of the proposal.
We don't know if we have, so...
Okay. Okay, but we don't have to.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Next item, ten C, consider approval donation from Farmers Insurance through Home Team Marketing. Mr. Arington?
Yes, administration would like to pull that item.
Thank you, Mr. Arington. Next item, ten D, discussion and possible action to approve amendment of architect contract with V L K Architects to exercise district option to use prototypical design process. Mr. Arington?
Yes, back in, uh, uh, let me get my dates right, uh, back in November of two thousand and sixteen, a little over a year, uh, a year ago, uh, we, uh, entered into a contract with V L K to design elementary school number twenty-nine. And in that, uh, RFQ, request for qualification, uh, we, uh, requested that if we were to do a prototypical design, uh, to all the people, uh, what would, uh, if the district so desired to go that way, uh, what would be the fees saving on that, uh, uh, going to a prototypical design? Basically, a prototypical design, we have used Purple Heart as our initial go-by. Elementary school number twenty-nine is kinda like Purple Heart and, uh, but we made some modifications because lessons learned. We wanted to get administration a little bit closer, move the, uh, uh, media center and, and stuff like that. So we've got a prototypical design, uh, that basically, uh, could be used for elementary school number thirty, which is gonna be built in the, uh, Pebble Hills area. And should the district go that route, there is a letter, uh, dated November the third, two thousand and sixteen, that basically says that, uh, on the second page, if we were to side adapt of the prototype design, which is the building that's under construction that I showed you pictures, we would go from a six percent fee that we paid for on that through, to a three point seven five percent fee, uh, to do a side adaptive or a prototype design. In round numbers, you know, uh, that could be anywhere from, depending on the cost of construction, could be anywhere from four hundred to five hundred plus thousand dollars in savings if we were to side adapt, uh, that particular, uh, project. So, uh, we have got four, three projects out on the street right now that we are receiving proposals for on the two thousand and seventeen bond. That is, uh, for professional services, Socorro High School, the SAC and the new, uh, SAC two and the new middle school for East Lake. The fourth project that we always said along in our, uh, bond presentation would be this particular elementary school. So I did not include that in the request for qualification because of this letter and basically we can, uh, with legal, uh, council's directive and, and, uh, we can, if the board so desires to proceed with that, we can do an amendment to that contract that we've already got under contract to the three point seven five percent. We have amended other architects' contract on various phases at Pebble Hills, High School and East Lake High School in the past, so this is nothing that, not at this savings, but we just continued on with, with them. So, uh, administration is recommending that we proceed with the prototypical design, uh, should the board, uh, passes that tonight. I'll answer any question.
Mr. Nada?
So, Mr. Arington, what, what, what you're asking us to consider is, um, when we design Purple Heart, uh, just basically take that plan and, um, apply that plan to the new school, the design of the school, the layout, everything else, and of course, it, it has to be adjusted for this particular site. You know, maybe, um, for example, the other school was, you know, a hundred yards across the front and fifty yards front to back. This lot could be the other way around, fifty yards across the front and a hundred, uh, front to back, so, you know, it'd have to be adjusted, but the layout, everything else, it's the foundation, we're just making some adjustments and that's gonna save us almost half of the cost.
That is correct.
Three point seven five, you said, but the last time our architecture costs were at, uh, six percent. So it's gonna save us some money and, and, and I think when we considered Purple Heart, uh, and the design of Purple Heart, well, and the letter proves it, that was our intent to design a school that we could continue to duplicate at other areas, so make sure that the design served us well. Has Purple Heart served us well? You know, does the layout work okay? Is the cafeteria big enough or, you know, all that stuff?
Yes, of course, remember, Purple Heart was designed as a combo school to be added on a middle school in the future.
Right.
So the cafeteria's a little bit bigger to compensate for that. Uh, if you go over to Purple Heart, you'll notice that some of that area is not being used because that is a very expensive area. But we've taken Purple Heart and put it in this new school that I just showed you and made those adjustments, so we actually would be using elementary school number twenty-nine as the prototypical design, which is a combination of Purple Heart. And, and prototypical design, uh, it is, uh, side adaptive, so yeah, you have to adjust it, uh, to the site because the sites are irregular or, like you said, a little bit wider, a little bit narrower. But, uh, in, in previous districts that I have done prototypical design in my future life as an architect, you always improve on them, but essentially, the design is a prototypical design. Yeah, you massage it, you, you make some adjustment. If the cafeteria needs to be a little bit bigger, you do something like that or you add a couple more classrooms to it, you know, but it's, uh, it's, uh, truly a prototypical design. If you look at the floor plant and you look at Purple Heart, uh, they're gonna look the same.
Right, so we're not reinventing the wheel, we're just improving it?
That is correct.
Okay, makes sense to me.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
Second? Have a motion by Ms. Nada, second by, who was it, by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, ten E, discussion and possible action regarding proposed resolution correspondence regarding DACA program and S I S D students. President Guerra? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, we'd like to pull this item to have administration looking to, uh, similar positions throughout the state of Texas.
You, you wanna pull the item?
Oh, uh, well, consider that, to consider the administration to...
I don't think you can do that. So what he has to do is make a motion to pull it and then somebody seconds it.
Excuse me?
Research it, so the administration can research it and then bring it.
Mr. Gonzalez, you wanna pull that one completely?
Um, just to have enough time for administration to give us a report into what other, uh, similar places in the state or the position they have taken in this item.
So if you have a motion?
Okay, then you need a second.
Especially if you're making a motion.
Right. You need to make a motion if that's what you want.
Yeah. He's making a motion, we need a second.
Correct. Sorry, apologize. Uh, Board President Guerra, Dr. Smith, members of the board, what we have is essentially a motion to hold the item and table it and bring it back at the next meeting. As I understand what your comment was, to allow the administration to research what other districts have done.
Right.
And then give you a report and then you'll decide on the item at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, sir.
Okay.
Have a motion, Mr. Gonzalez? Motion's denied. In regard, in regard to the discussion, um, at this time, if we could have A F T come up and speak on the resolution and next we'll have, uh, Angelica from S C A. Ms. Mendez?
Good evening, President Guerra, Superintendent. Thank you for allowing us to read this. This resolution declaring the Socorro Independent School District as a welcoming, safe and inclusive school district committed to providing a secure environment for all students, parents, educational personnel and families.
Whereas the United States Supreme Court decision in Pire versus Doe nineteen eighty-two ruled that no public school district can deny children access to free public education based on their immigration status or that perceived of their parents, recognizing the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment.
Whereas it is the right of every child in the state of Texas to access a free public school K through twelve education and the Socorro Independent School District should affirm their position as a district that welcomes and supports all students regarding the immigration status, religion or country of origin.
Whereas the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, prohibits public schools from sharing educational records with outside agencies without parental consent, a court order, subpoena or other exception as provided by law.
Whereas S I S D is a district with a large immigration and foreign, foreign population, including mixed status families, where one family member is at... including mixed status families, where one family member is at risk of deportation.
Whereas, federal immigration law enforcement activities, ICE raids on or around district property and transportation routes, whether by surveillance, interview, demand for information, arrest, detention, or any other means, harmfully disrupt the learning environment to which all students, regardless of immigration status, are entitled and significantly interfere with the ability of all students, including U.S. students and students who hold their other legal grounds for presence in the U.S., to access a free public K-12 education.
Whereas, through its policies and practices, SISD has made a commitment to equality education for all students, which includes a safe and stable learning environment, means of transportation to and from school sites, the preservation of classroom hours for educational instruction, and the requirement of school attendance.
Whereas, increased enforcement actions sweeping the country have brought chilling and paralyzing fear and concern about the continued physical and emotional safety of all students, and the right to access a free public K-12 education through district schools and programs.
Whereas, on September fifth, two thousand and seventeen, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, DACA, federal programs was terminated by the administration, leaving over eight hundred thousand beneficiaries of DACA at risk of deportation.
And whereas, educational personnel are often the primary sources of support, resources, and information to assist and support students and student learning, which includes their emotional and physical health.
Now, therefore, it is resolved that the SISD declares the district to be a safe haven for all students, meaning that the district is at a place free from discrimination, harassment, bullying, and the threat of deportation. SISD is a place for students to learn, to thrive, and to seek assistance, information, and support related to any immigration law enforcement that interferes with their learning experience.
Be it further resolved that immigration enforcement activities will not be conducted on school campuses.
Be it further resolved that the U.S. Immigration Enforcement Office, ICE, state or local law enforcement agencies acting on behalf of ICE or agents or efforts for any federal, state, or local law enforcement agency attempting to enforce federal immigration laws, are to follow district policy, GRA, legal and local, attached, and to incorporate in this resolution to ensure that the district meets its duty to provide all students, regardless of immigration status, access to a free public K through twelve education.
Be it further resolved that a dis, that SISD prohibits immigration enforcement agencies or state or local law enforcement agencies acting on behalf of ICE to visit a school site without a judicial warrant and by approval of the superintendent's office, given the likelihood of substantial disruption posed by the presence of ICE or state or local law enforcement agencies acting for ICE. Any requests by ICE or other agencies to visit a school site should be presented to the superintendent's office for review as to whether access to the site is permitted by law.
Be it further resolved, and it is continued commitment to the protection of student privacy, the district shall review its records, keeping policies and practices to ensure that no data is being collected with respect to students' immigration status or place of birth, and cease any such collection in its, in turn, and it's irrelevant to the educational enterprise and potentially discriminatory.
Be it further resolved, should ICE or other immigration law enforcement agents request any student information, the request should be referred to the superintendent's office to ensure compliance with Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, student constitutional privacy, standards for a judicial warrant, and any other limitation on disclosure. This review should be conducted expeditiously, but before any production of information is made.
Be it further resolved, the SISD district shall post this resolution at every school site, and describe to the district staff, students, and parents using usual means of communication, and that the resolution will be translated into all languages spoken by students at, at home.
Be it further resolved, the district shall provide teachers, administrators, and other school personnel with training opportunities on how to support the educational success of undocumented refugee students, and address Immigration Customs Enforcement, ICE raids.
Be it further resolved, the board affirms that certificate, that certificate district employees have the academic freedom to discuss the resolution during class time, provided and its age appropriate, and students are to be made aware that the district counselors are available to discuss the subjects contained in this resolution, and?
Be it further resolved, after-school providers and other vendors and service providers who contract with the district shall be notified of this resolution within thirty days and required to abide by it.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Socorro Independent School District hereby extends its support to the resolution and urges all schools, work sites, centers, and departments within its jurisdiction to support the district-wide observance.
Thank you for your support of all our students.
Thank you, ladies. Do we have any other questions?
Comments?
Mr. Nara?
Mr. Guerra, you know, the Socorro Independent School Districts, I, I don't know if I want to, we have a statement on our website that says, "We do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, or age in its programs." To me, this is simply an affirmation, a reminder. Of course, the resolution that we stand by what has been on our website since as long as I've been around, you know. I've worked at, at several employers, great ones and, and some not so great. You know, I know that one of the things that makes a difference is education, you know. And, one of the greatest teacher employers, teacher, employee teachers that facilitated, maybe that I've ever met, had a picture, now we call them memes, right? But, it was a, an organizational executive that said, you know, "What if we educate them, our employees, and they leave? You know, why am I going to spend all this money? Educate them and they leave." And the educator's response was, "What if we don't educate them and they stay?" And many times, that has made a huge difference in employers, between successful organizations and those that fail. And sometimes, it just amazes me that we don't apply those exact same concepts to the communities that we live in. You know, yes, these students, what if we educate them and then they leave, right? But, what if we don't and they stay? What are we doing? We're putting them at a disadvantage, you know. It's amazing, one time, and, and I, I, I don't know how I found this, but I happened to have the opportunity to stay at the hotel, and it was a historic hotel, because it happens to be the hotel where John F. Kennedy proposed to his wife in, in, in Boston. And, and that wasn't, you know, I mean, that's why it sticks. But, I happened to be there, and I didn't realize, as I walked across the street to what appeared to be this historic building, there was an inscription, and it has actually the location, what they believed to be the location of one of the first public schools in the nation. And there was this inscription in the wall, and it read that that was possibly or near to it the location of one of the first public schools in the Pilgrims, which is what we call them now, right, took the opportunity to teach the children of the Native Americans. And they said they took, they, they, they took that opportunity to teach the Native Americans, not because they wanted to force education on them, but because they wanted to improve their community. They realized that the only way they could continue to do that and expand and build is if, and they also, you know, taught all the other kids, and therefore, eventually, over time, you had a more educated community. And the interesting thing was that it was free. They didn't charge these Native Americans, you know, and they probably, in, in, in terms of monetary trade, they, they probably couldn't have paid them. You know, the Native Americans at that time may not have understood what the value of that education was, but the people trying to educate, you know, the Native Americans, or the people who lived here already, to read and understand and everything else, they saw that, and so they didn't charge them. Because, of course, from, you know, people trying to force education on you, if you're a little kid to me, you know, and I have a dollar, and you say, "I want that dollar to teach you," I'm going to say, "No, I'm going to go buy candy," you know. But, the point was, is that it was free. And so, that long-winded story is simply to say, you know, that, that this resolution is no different than what we're already doing and should be doing. And if we don't do it, we're setting ourselves at a disadvantage. And I don't know, I don't understand why this isn't even, even a question. But with that, I'll just, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Guerra? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah. For the record, I am for DACA. The problem I have is not that. The problem I have is that we are proposing to set ourselves against the federal government and their laws, okay? Not just because we can say, you're gonna, we're gonna have a sanctuary city here, or a sanctuary, whatever. At what point, you know, by breaking the law of a land, that is the law, the Constitution is the law of land. And it says that the federal government has jurisdiction over that. So, at one point or another, and I don't know what the state is going to do or anything like that, it may set us against one another. And, not because I, I believe that, that they have sent the argument to the Senate, to the Congress, and to the states to decide. And I believe that each and every one of us can, you know, reach our representatives and say, "Hey, you know, I'm going to tell them I am for DACA. You need to find a place or a way to, you know, amend the law." And, and following the law is what this is all about. Because I do not want to set ourselves against the law of land. Thank you.
Justice of the Board, the, and the Board's advisor on this information that we are, Mr. Nara made a, made a motion to discuss a possible action regarding proposed resolution and correspondence regarding DACA proposal and SISD students from both AFT and SCA. The motion was by Mr. Nara. Any discussion? Ms. Nara?
Yes, sir. Mr. Guerra, the correspondence wasn't read out loud. I do have a concern about some of the language used in the correspondence. There are twice in the bottom of the correspondence that we use the word "demand." This correspondence is to Representative Hurd, and I think we can use a little bit more appropriate language when asking him to consider this Clean Dreamers Act. Instead of "demand," we implore you. So, I would like to ask that we change the "demand" in that correspondence. It is being sent from the board, and it's just a nice way to do things, him, and so. But, I second Mr. Nara's motion.
Hold on. Then, withdraw my motion, and make a motion to approve the resolution and the letter with the request to replace the word "demand" with "implore."
Mm-hmm. I second.
Motion by Mr. Nara, second by Ms. Nara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next. Next item, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel regarding status and possible acquisition of real property adjacent to Socorro Student Activities Complex, property from JA and ME, Perez property from CA Brewster, and property from Rancho's Real fifteen LLC for school district needs, for discussion regarding the status and employment of G. McClure to include recommendation from administration to suspend without pay and terminate employment for good cause. Status and employment of G. Sacedo to include recommendation from administration to suspend without pay and terminate employment for good cause. To consider rescinding resignation of Erica Cruz, teacher of William D. Slade Middle School, to discuss personal and real estate matters, and to consider administrative recommendations for Director of Human Resources, staffing and recruiting, principal position at Robert A. Rojas Elementary School, assistant principal positions at James P. Butler Elementary School, Pebble Hills High School, and Sun Ridge Middle School, under Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. The time is seven forty-five. The Board is back from executive session. The time is nine forty-three. We'll move on. Number twelve, new business, discussion and possible action to approve the following items for the acquisition of real property for school district needs. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. We gave the board an update on the district's efforts to acquire certain known parcels of property and some expected parcels of property. And we've got four different items under twelve A. I provided to the board proposed motions for consideration that hopefully will approve tonight to allow the administration to move forward to acquire the various lots. Item twelve A one, we don't yet know which of the various groups that we discussed will be acquired, so there's not a specific lot mentioned. For items A, twelve A two, three, and four, we have identified the particular owners of those properties. And so, I'd ask if you could take them up one at a time for each. One of the items, beginning with twelve A one, the approval of acquisition of real property adjacent to the Socorro Student Activities Complex.
Motion to approve?
We've got a particular language that we need for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you have them, right?
Sorry to rescind your motion.
I'll rescind my motion, sorry.
Thank you. I move to authorize the administration on behalf of the district to enter into and perform its obligations under any given commercial contract for unimproved property, whether one or more, contract, between the district as purchaser and such owners as sellers for the acquisition of real property adjacent to the district's student activities complex at thirteen hundred Joe Battle Boulevard, El Paso County, El Paso, Texas, seven-nine-nine-three-six, for district use in line with the terms discussed during closed session. To authorize Paul Guerra as president and Thomas A. Eintin, AIA, as chief operations officer of the district, and each of them acting alone, to sign such agreements, documents, and instruments as may be required under the contract, and to authorize the secretary and vice president of the board of the district to execute their certificate of resolutions as presented during closed session. That's the motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nara, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number twelve A two is a resolution approving the acquisition of property from individuals identified by their initials, JA and ME Perez.
I move to authorize the administration on behalf of the district to enter into and perform its obligations under that certain commercial contract, unimproved property, contract, between the district as purchaser and Jose Antonio and Maria Esperanza Villanueva Perez as sellers for the acquisition of real property for district use in line with the terms discussed during closed session. To authorize Paul Guerra as president and Thomas A. Eintin, AIA, as chief operations officer of the district, and each of them acting alone, to sign such agreements, documents, and instruments as may be required under the contract, and to authorize the secretary and vice president of the board of the district to execute their certificate of resolutions as presented during closed session.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nara, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve A three, Mr. Blanco?
And thank you. Item twelve A three is a resolution approving the acquisition of property from CA Brewster.
I move to authorize the administration on behalf of the district to enter into and perform its obligations under that certain commercial contract, unimproved property, contract, between the district as purchaser and Cecilia A. Brewster as seller for the acquisition of real property for district use, in line with the terms discussed during closed session. To authorize Paul Guerra as president and Thomas A. Eintin, AIA, as chief operations officer of the district, and each of them acting alone, to sign such agreements, documents, and instruments as may be required under the contract, and to authorize the secretary and vice president of the board of the district to execute their certificate of resolutions as presented during closed session.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Nara, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And the final one is twelve A four, a resolution approving the acquisition of property from Rancho's Real fifteen LLC. I move to authorize the administration on behalf of the district to enter into and perform its obligations under that certain commercial contract, unimproved property, contract, between the district as purchaser and Rancho's Real fifteen LLC as seller for the acquisition of real property for district use, in line with the terms discussed during closed session. To authorize Paul Guerra as president and Thomas A. Eintin, AIA, as chief operations officer of the district, and each of them acting alone, to sign such agreements, documents, and instruments as may be required under the contract, and to authorize the secretary and vice president
and instruments as may be required under the contract, and to authorize the secretary and vice president of the board of the district to execute the certificate of resolutions as presented during closed session.
Second.
I actually misspoke. It's Rancho's Real 16 LLC. If you could just amend your motion to note that it's Rancho's Real 16.
I amend my motion from Rancho's Real 15 to Rancho's Real 16 LLC.
Second.
Have a motion by, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, 12B. Discussing possible action regarding employment of G. McClure and recommendation from administration to suspend without pay and terminate employment for good cause. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. At the last meeting in November, we actually addressed this for the first time. The board actually asked for additional information at the November meeting to include some of the investigative materials regarding the employment issue with Mr. McClure. Those materials were provided and reviewed by the board. Y'all had some questions that were answered, I understand, tonight in closed session, and we are now asking, and the administration is recommending, that the board authorize the administration to suspend Mr. McClure without pay pending termination, and to take action to terminate his employment contract for good cause.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next item, item 12C. Discussing possible action regarding employment of G. Sacedo and recommendation from administration to suspend without pay and terminate employment for good cause. Mr. Blanco?
And thank you, Board President Guerra. We gave you an update on the status of Mr. Sacedo's employment with the district and the administration's recommendation to suspend Mr. Sacedo without pay pending termination, and to authorize the administration to initiate action to terminate his employment contract for good cause. We'd recommend the board authorize those two items.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, 12D. Consider approval rescinding resignation of Erica Cruz. Dr. Espinoza.
Mr. Capoya?
Yes, President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, board members. As discussed in executive session, we are requesting to rescind the resignation of Erica Cruz, and she will be required to sign an agreement that the resenting of the resignation is effective as of today, the board meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, 12E. Consider approval administration recommendations. The first one is Director of Human Resource, Staffing and Recruiting.
Yes, President Guerra, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Angelica Herrera to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new director of HR.
Motion to approve? Second.
A motion by Ms. Rodriguez, second by Ms. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one will be Principal of Robert R. Rojas Elementary School.
President Guerra, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Maria Del Rosario Flores to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a principal at Rojas Elementary.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Flores. Next one, Assistant Principal for James Butler Elementary School.
President Guerra, members of the board, at this time, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Pebble Hills High School?
President Guerra, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. April Granados to assume the roles and the responsibilities as a new assistant principal at Pebble Hills High School.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Granados. Next one, Sun Ridge Middle School.
President Guerra, members of the board, at this time, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. So there's no other business with this board, the meeting is adjourned at 9:42.